If you bow your heads with me, please. Dear God, our most loving Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've given us and this wonderful city in which we have to live. Father, we know that we are a blessed nation and a blessed people, and as we make decisions tonight for this community, give us the strength and fortitude and the measure of your wisdom so that we do watch right for all whose lives we affect. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Does he?
Good evening, and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting, August the 13th, 2009. Council members, the first item is our consent agenda. If you have a copy of that, if there's any item on the consent agenda that you would like for us to discuss, we can do that at this time. If not, I will entertain a motion to present the, to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Let him hang out for a minute.
Move for adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion in second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next, consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to River Rock Boulevard, final change order. You have a copy attached. Who's presenting that tonight?
Where are you at?
It's on the consent agenda.
Oh, it's on the consent agenda. Okay.
Push your glasses up just a little further.
There you go. Now, I'm sorry. Got the wrong one. Consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to amend an area of Winslow Park at Berkshire subdivision zone PRD located along Blackman Road. Let's try that one.
I think we ought to look for that.
I think.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next, consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway, Commercial Highway, CH District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next, consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning, Section 2 and 26, and Charts 1, 4, and 5 pertaining to parking, queuing, and loading.
Second.
Motion in second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next, consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to annex an area located along West Thompson Lane.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion in second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next, consider recommendations of the planning commission, item A, and schedule a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 6.78 acres along St. Andrews Drive from RS-15 to PCD. Mr. Adelot.
Vice Mayor Bratcher, members of the council. During this regular meeting on August 5th of 2009, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matter that will need to be scheduled for a public hearing, and that's a zoning request for approximately 6.7 acres located south of Highway 99 and west of St. Andrews Drive, and that's to be rezoned from RS-15 to PCD. The other item, you've already scheduled for a public hearing for August 27th.
Right. Ms. McGannon, do you have a date?
I do. I would suggest September 17th.
September 17th. We, council's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
And just to recap real quickly, we've already scheduled a public hearing for this matter. We're trying to move it on a fast schedule because this involves a, an office in the avenues, and the planning commission has already conducted the public hearing, and they did unanimously recommend approval. We'll pass it on third, and we'll consider it for third reading the same night as the public hearing on August the 27th.
Okay. Next item is considered for passage on first reading, ordinance 09-OZ-34, to amend the zoning orders that regards planning, plan, sign, overlay, PSO District located along Medical Center Parkway. As Mr. Adelot mentioned, a public hearing is scheduled for August the 27th, and we scheduled that during the July the 30th meeting. First reading. And we will have the public hearing on third, on third and final reading, but it looks like it's going to turn out, so.
Move for passage on first reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next, consider the recommendations of our transportation director with regards to A CCTV and traffic center signal interconnection project phase three. Welcome, Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. I do have those two items before you this evening. While they're both different projects, they are similar in the fact that they're both funded through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, also known as RRA funds, also known as stimulus funds. The first project that we have before you is the CCTV extension project and interconnect project. This is the third phase of the three-phase system that we have in place. You may recall that the first phase was put in back in 1998. That was, at that time, the first system in the state of Tennessee. It has served us very well to date. However, a lot of the older cameras, you probably noticed them on the website or on our Channel 3, are no love or functional, and part of this project would be to not only replace some of the older cameras, but to expand the system with the growth of the community. For instance, further out, 231 north toward Compton Road, further out 96 west toward Veterans Parkway. Right now, for instance, that one cuts off at I-24. So, we are trying to expand the system. Also in this is the installation of fiber optic cable, which would expand the interconnection of our signal system as well, and as you know, all of that's brought back here to City Hall and our traffic operations center. To facilitate this, we'd requested a contract from the Department of Transportation. That's before you this evening. I did outline the funding in your letter. This is funded from two sources. One million dollars is funded through the RRA funds, and approximately 13,000 is funded through the congestion mitigation air quality improvement funds, again, federal funds. And we would recommend that you approve the agreement that is before you between City Murfreesboro and Department of Transportation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Richardson about these cameras?
Mr. Richardson, just so the public understands, we're talking about our signal cameras that we can monitor the intersections. We're not talking about red light cameras.
That's correct. These are our closed-circuit television cameras that you would see on Channel 3 and on our website. Those are for traffic management purposes and, in fact, aren't even capable of doing that.
Will there be any, is there any plans to expand our base here at City Hall adding the cameras? Would that need any expansion or any modification?
You talk about our operations center? Yes. In that is some updates on the equipments. The monitors that we have in there now are over 10 years old as well, which is awfully good service for something that's been owned constantly for 10 or 11 years. So, we are upgrading some of the visual equipment, also some of the telecommunications equipment, the switches and things like that, so that is part of the system as well.
Some of the best programming TV has to offer. I know you sit and watch the traffic all the time. I heard you talk about it. Any other questions to Mr. Richardson? We'll entertain a motion.
Move for proof.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next is the Thompson Lane resurfacing northwest Broad Street to Old Fort Parkway.
Yes, these are some funds that we acquired competitively through the Metropolitan Planning Organization for system preservation funds, basically the repaving of some of the streets. We were successful in getting that one project. Thompson Lane was built back in 93. Probably a lot of people that have moved here since probably assumed it's been there forever, but the section of Thompson Lane between Broad and Old Fort really hasn't been there that long. However, in the life of pavement, it's been there for a good while. It's not been paved since, and it's coming up to a point that it does need to be repaved in this project. And what made this a project that we gained competitively is that we're looking to, I guess, implement some multimodal components of the project, being the inclusion of bike lanes after it's repaved and restriped, and also replacement of some missing sections of sidewalks and some other pedestrian-oriented things at the intersections itself. When this thing was originally designed back in 93, we had pursued getting that striped of bike lanes at that time. You may remember that this almost coincided exactly with the adoption of the city's Bicycle Master Plan. Due to some timing limitations and getting approval from some of the other participants, we were not able to do that and had to go on and have that striped the way it was. We're now taking the opportunity under this funding source and the repaving to go back and add that as a component of this project. As, as a method of getting this done, we, again, do have to provide a contract with the City of Murfreesboro and Department of Transportation for use of these federal funds. The total amount of the funding that's being supplied in this contract is 625,000, which would include some funds for some front-end engineering work as well as the construction. And you have that before you, and I'd recommend approval of that contract.
Any questions to Mr. Richardson? What are your wishes?
We approve the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Appreciate the hard work. Next, consider recommendations of our city manager. We have several items. First item is their Evergreen Cemetery security lighting. Mr. Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Bratcher, members of the council. During this year's budget, the council included an allocation of $250,000 to provide some improvements at Evergreen Cemetery. Mr. Huddleston and Mr. Roberts had come to the city manager's office and indicated they had a couple of needs, and we included funds in your budget this year for that. It included $80,000 to remove some trees that the urban environmental department was not able to take care of, and also that, so that work will be privately contracted. And out of that $250,000 allocation, we'll pay for that tree removal. Likewise, there's some paving on the interior drives that need to be completed, and we'll use that money to pay the contractor for that as well. As you all know, there was some vandalism in the cemetery, and we see the need to add some additional security lighting since both the tree project and the paving have come in under budget. We want to recommend using some of that allocation to pay for some security lighting. That will require some underground electric. That will be a pretty involved project, just as they remove the trench, the waste from the trench material. There'll be a lot of handwork, since it's located in the cemetery, but we'll have MED then install some security lights. The estimated cost for the trench work on the condo, it's about $63,000. So, it will still be under budget, but we would like to bring that recommendation to you this evening.
Any questions, Mr. Lyons? It's, you know, it's, we all, I know we all regret what happened, and hopefully we can prevent that with some lighting, and maybe we look at some other security measures down the road if we need to. Good project. Well needed.
Move, accept the recommendation, city manager.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. I know we have the chairman of the Evergreen Cemetery here with us. Appreciate your hard work. Next, our next item, it was an exciting venture. Our next item is the Rutherford County Visitor Center and Chamber of Commerce would award the construction contract to Southland Constructors. Mr. Lyons, I know we have our chamber new director here, Mr. Paul Latour, welcome. I know he's got some additional people with him. He may want to introduce or later on in the presentation, but Mr. Lyons, I'll turn it over to you, and we'll go from there.
Sir, we are excited to bring this to you this evening. We've been working on this for a long time. There has been a lot of work on this, and wouldn't want to start this without thanking Mr. Richardson for all the hard work he has done with TDOT to bring us to this point. Back in March, I came and brought to you kind of an overview about this project, how it was going to be funded, and the fact that it was getting ready to be put out to bid. This is a combination building. The money that we received from TDOT is funding a visitor center, which will be located on the first floor. The Chamber of Commerce will be located on the second and third floor. So, we have gone through a process with TDOT to negotiate the allocation of costs between these two pieces to the building, and once that approval was completed, the project was put out for bid by Hart Frelin Roberts, who's represented here this evening. The city opened up bids a couple weeks ago, and the low bidder is Southland Constructors, and their low bid amount was $5,194,000. Now, this will be a city-owned building on a city-owned piece of property. The grants from TDOT total approximately $3.3 million. Additionally, the Chamber of Commerce has got $2 million that it received from a foundation. But in terms of how we allocate the costs, the city will have about $1.5 million to fund in this building. However, the Chamber of Commerce will be repaying the city for that amount, plus 3% interest in its lease, and that lease is expected to come back to you later in August. A lot of folks have worked long and hard to get us to this place. We're really excited about what the visitor center can do in terms of how we greet our visitors, and the Chamber of Commerce certainly needs the extra space at this point. So, it is our recommendation that you do award the contract. The contract is the standard AIA contract. We will not have liquidated damages, as we typically do, and TDOT won't allow us to have retainage, but I know we will be watching the contractor closely. We've heard good things about them, and we would recommend approval of this contract to you.
Any questions to Mr. Lyons, or any one, Mr. Latour, or any one from the chamber? They're here to answer your questions.
There are no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Thank you. Looking forward to getting started. We have a, can you give us some timelines, or is there any dates starting completion?
You know, the contractor will need to get his bonds and insurance, and will need to have a pre-construction conference, and then once we get started, it's about 14 months to construct, so.
Looking forward to it.
End of next year.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the refinance portion of the city's debt. A, adoption of the Resolution 09-R-23 authorizing the execution terms, assurance, sales, and payment of not to exceed $72.5 million in general obligations and refunding bonds, Series 2009. Mr. Lyons?
Thank you. This is a series of three resolutions, which are listed on your agenda separately, but my explanation and the reasons for why we are doing this will be the same for all three.
We need to take all three of them separately.
We will need to do each of them separately. The first resolution deals with city general debt. That would be debt that we had incurred for schools, roads, fire, police, parks, et cetera. The second resolution deals with Murfreesboro Water and Sewer. Third resolution, Murfreesboro Electric. This is not the incurrence of new debt. We're not borrowing any new money in this recommendation. It's merely a refinancing of what we've already got. For a good while, the city has exclusively used the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, which offers a variable interest rate program. We've saved considerable amount of money with that program, but we believe in this point in time that we need to diversify our debt portfolio. While the bond fund has served us well, we also know that with variable rate, there are certain risks, and by moving some of our debt portfolio to a fixed-rate structure where fixed rates are near all-time lows, we really think we can mitigate that risk and still have our interest rate covered in terms of what we budget. I'll remind you that, you know, in our budget, we budget our interest costs at 4%, and right now, the long-term fixed rate is 3.5%. Now, that will change up and down as we go to market, but we think it makes sense right now to lock that down. I'm giving you a pretty detailed report that goes over a number of the reasons for doing so. You know, primarily the fact that the fixed-rate debt as part of our portfolio, we think makes long-term sense. The city's financial advisor, PFM, is here this evening. They recommend such approval. The rating agencies look at having a debt portfolio that has a mix as well, and when we look at our peers in Tennessee, they also use a mix of variable rate debt and fixed-rate debt in some cases. So, we think this makes sense for the city for the long term. The general fund portion of this would include refunding all of the debt that was originated with SunTrust. We're in a position where that has gone to bank bonds and are required to refinance that. And then, secondly, we've selected two of the loans that were held by Bank of America to include in this bond refinancing to maximize our yield and add additional money to our refunding that would be fixed rate. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Are there any questions to Mr. Lyons concerning this refinancing? We'd like to just point out, and the city manager touched on it, you know, the general debt here is generally for schools, roads, bridges, you know, and parks and things like that, which last our city residents for many years, 40, 50, 60 years typically, and we typically finance those on a 15-year note, and I know we, so we pay those out long before their useful life is up. I know we just paid off our Case and Land School, Case and Land Academy. I think here, shortly, we'll pay off Segal. So, it's, the plan has worked out really well, and I think this is a smart move in the right direction.
Vice Mayor, if I'm remembering correctly, we've never done anything longer than 15 years.
I think you're right.
One thing, a point I want to make sure I'm clear on, Mr. Lyons, we're currently reserving in our budget at an average rate of 4.5% interest. Is that correct?
We're budgeting at 4%.
4%. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, we're going to see an improvement of a half a percent on $118 million. Is that correct?
Well, the variable rate currently is below 3.5%.
I understand that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about what we reserve. We're going to see a net improvement in our cash flow, is my point. Okay.
No, we're going, we're going to pay interest well within what we have reserved to be able to pay.
That's my point.
There are many loans, the variable rate, and, tell me if I'm wrong, we have paid less than what we have budgeted, and we've been able to capitalize on that from year to year, but taking a sure bet at this time on the fixed rate simply allows us to make sure that we're going to stay within what we budget for the long haul as opposed to playing the risk game.
For this portion of that, yes, sir.
Is that, is that a fair assessment?
That's it.
And it is still below what we had budgeted?
Right.
You're right.
That was my point.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I was just going to say, you know, with everything that we've, we've read or that we've researched over the last several years, that the problem that we've had with, I don't want to say the problem that we've had, but the problem that several people in the country have had with the, with the variable rate loans or adjustable rate loans, now we, like you said, mitigate a majority of our risk, that we now can make sure that we know where we're going to be. But, but the one thing I would, I would say that I think that we touched on is, I don't, you know, we've had, over the last 10 years, in my credit, we've had four schools that we've constructed. I believe that's right. The Pittard School that we just constructed two years ago, that we, we're on our second full calendar year, I mean, that school alone was close to $20 million, you know, and part of it, we spent, I think it was $600,000, $7,000 to put in the geothermal system that when we reported at budget time this year, that they were saying five years to repay, and now we've repaid it in less than two years. So, you know, although when we look at the debt that the city has, and I don't think anyone likes debt, but, you know, we have to make sure that from a standpoint of our, of our facilities and our children, that we keep up with, with what we need to do, and with the 15-year payoff unlike what we have been, at the same time with keeping our reserves where we need to and not having to increase our, our property taxes. I mean, we're, we're, have a track record, track record to show, I think this is, you know, a good move, so.
Good point. Mr. Gilly?
I was just going to say, you know, a simplistic way, I think, to maybe compare this is, you know, if you're at the gambling tables in Vegas and you get really way ahead in your winnings, the smart man takes his money, goes and puts it where he can lock it down rather than staying to see if he keeps riding the wave or, or losing out, and this way, we're going out off the variables, we're changing on a high note and locking in for the sure thing within a range that we know we can afford to pay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
If there are no other questions, Vice Mayor, I move for approval of the city manager's recommendation.
The first one.
We have a motion to hear second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Colorado, Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye. Next, adopt Resolution 09-R-24 authorizing execution terms, assurance, sale, and payment of not to exceed $43,800,000 water and sewer systems revenues and tax refunding bonds,
It's the same reasoning, same justification for, for water and sewer. This one totals $43.8 million.
Move for adoption.
Have a motion and a second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, adopt Resolution 09-R-25, initial resolution authorizing the assurance by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee of not to exceed $1,730,000 electric system revenue and tax refunding bond, Series 2009. All the same reasons, Mr. Lyons.
This one's just a little bit different. The loan that we're talking about this evening is a $1.7 million loan. Now this was a revenue bond, but this was a fixed rate issue. The financial advisor in looking at the work that we were doing saw an opportunity to reduce our interest costs by going to a fixed rate on this one, a lower fixed rate. Now this one will require us to adopt an initial resolution and then offer the comment period because this is now going to be backed by GO even though it'll be paid for by the electric department and the revenues it receives from ratepayers. At the end of the day, this does have a backing of general obligation. So this is an opportunity for us to save some money is the short story.
We also have PD Minut with the Merciful Electric Department here with us as well. If there's any questions that he may answer, we'll entertain some questions from Mr. Lyons or Mr. Minut if you have any council members. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of the resolution. Second.
Motion is second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Bratcher, I'd like to certainly acknowledge and thank Ms. Lisa Daniel who's here this evening from PFM who's served as our financial advisor, has been very helpful in analyzing all of this and helping us through this process. So her work has been very much appreciated.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate your expertise. Next, consider any beer permit applications for the council.
We have one tonight. It's a restaurant at 1432 Memorial Boulevard. They today finally finished their final inspections and they're about ready to open. They've met all of our requirements.
What are the council wishes?
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Call the row, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, consider the payment of statements and we have a new list of statements that's been placed on our desk and have time to look those over.
I believe that we pay the bills.
Have a motion to pay the statements or hear a second.
Second.
Motion and a second.